This word is gonna be late.
Hey, Royce. Royce, I've got both of these signed afterwards.
You just found time, you can take a little break now. Couple of minutes. Power.
Should have slowed down eating a little bit.
Able to man. Yeah. Help myself with this meeting.
You what?
We have a lopsided table. I can just look this way now.
Making up for a couple meetings ago when I was the only one down here.
Yeah.
And everybody's over there.
You know, I was driving around the country.
Mister Chair, uh, when six o'clock rolls around, we are ready to go. So you're free to start whenever you'd like.
Sounds good. I'll wait for it to turn six o'clock by my cell phone and we'll go. Do we have Commissioner King online? He said he might try and call in.
I don't see him yet.
Okay.
Let it be online if you have a good connection.
Yeah. I was on vacation, so I don't know that I expect him to call in.
Then Barry Lake, isn't he?
Hey, it's now six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Uh, go ahead and get started. Thank you. Welcome to tonight's planning commission meeting. Uh, tonight's invocation or thought will be given by Commissioner Garner and then pledge allegiance by Commissioner Shay, Commissioner Garner.
Our beloved Father in heaven, we pray that thy spirit will be with us throughout this meeting as we discuss and ponder on the things that will benefit the city. And father, we pray that we'll be guided to do those things which will benefit this wonderful city in which we live. And we pray for peace and civility in this meeting and throughout the world at this time. We say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Invite you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is adoption of our agenda for tonight. And we did note there is no number four, so we will just skip item number four when it comes around. Um, so let's take a motion to, um, let's adopt tonight's agenda.
Move to adopt.
With motion to adopt, we have second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item is to is our meeting minutes, approval of our meeting minutes from our last meeting. Uh, they were included with the packet. Does anyone have any, uh, comments or corrections? If not, we can take a motion to adopt.
Here, I don't see any corrections, comments needed, but so I'll make a motion that we adopt the regular meeting and work session for June eighteenth.
Thank you, Commissioner Garner. We have a second.
Second.
Second, the Commissioner Shay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Um, also note for tonight's minutes that, uh, as of right now, Commissioner Hunter and Commissioner King are not in attendance tonight. The next item is public comment. And this is an opportunity for the public to address the planning commission on items that are not scheduled on our agenda for tonight. We do have some public hearings for tonight, so if you are here for one of those, please wait and make your comment at that time. Um, if you have a comment other than those, please come to the podium, state your name and address and make your comment and try and keep it to three minutes or less, please. Okay, go ahead and close public comment then. Next item is a public hearing. And now this one, um, did we get the information we need or is this still to you recommend tabling because we don't have the information?
Uh, we're, we're still in the same position. I'd be happy to present on it or if you'd like, you can move forward with it anyway.
It is since the schedule for a public hearing, is it worth just tabling it to begin with and hold the public hearing another time or?
Um, I, in terms of, uh, I, I think it depends on who's showed up for it. So if we have people here who are, uh, looking to comment on it, I think we should hear that, but.
Okay, I'll go ahead and ask, is, is there, this is a schedule for public, Pacific Steel Building Expansion. Um, the planning commission does not have enough information to make an assessment tonight on it. Is there anyone here, if you just give me a show of hands, if anyone is here to discuss this, to comment on this topic tonight? Okay, looks like we don't need to have the public hearing. Let's go ahead and, um, if the commission wants to have a discussion or we can just wreck the, uh, table because there's the information lacking.
Uh, Mister Chair.
Yes.
It, uh, as a suggestion, uh, we, we're, I'm happy to renotice things, but also again, where this was noticed for tonight. If there is no one here, if we hold the public hearing and that does meet that requirement, if you'd like, I'd renotice it too.
I'll go ahead and, um, if you want to make just a brief introduction of it and then we'll open public hearing and then we'll go on.
Absolutely. Yeah. So this is just an ex- an expansion to the existing, uh, Pacific Steel Building. It's the large green building. That's kind of tucked away off of one thousand west. Um, so they're, they're close. They just have some architectural things they need, uh, still meet. So just some outstanding comments. Um, basically just doubles the size of the structure. So for what's out there, building to the north of that, another, uh, section of the building that more or less mirrors what's currently there. Um, so, but once I have that information, I will bring it back to you, uh, once I have updates on the architecture and everything. And, uh, with that taken care of, but, uh, but what's being proposed, um, meets all of the, uh, general building massing and setbacks and everything like that. So it's just more just an aesthetic issue.
Okay. Thank you. Well, this is scheduled for a public hearing tonight. So as we mentioned, I'll go ahead and open public hearing for this item. Okay, we'll close public hearing. Uh, back to the commission again, this we can, we have the different options. Staff has recommended we table it because they are not, there's things lacking still. Um, if when we table it, um, as our condition for tabling, maybe say something like, uh, we'll reconsider once all the, uh, needed, um, adjustments have been made and just, and delivered to staff. But we can do something else with the commission rather.
Seeing no comments, I move the planning commission, continue the request of Chad Spencer. Um, for an industrial site plan for an expansion of the specific steel building on property located at four oh four South ten eighty west in the industrial developmental zone until all staff comments are addressed. So this will be tabled to a future date.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a zoning amendment. Um, request for a, a rezone from A one to P O. Just Noah, you've got this one?
Hmm, yeah, good evening. My commission. Uh, yep, so we've got a rezone. Current zoning is A one and proposed zoning is professional office. This is what we've, what's known as the uh, earthworks building. So, uh, if you remember in recent history, they have ran into some issues with the neighbors because of how much they've grown and the noise and things like that. So they're proposing to move out uh, to a, well, you, you probably remember a couple of months ago, we approved a site plan for their new location. So now they're wanting to lease the space. Uh, there's an applicant that, uh, called, uh, Whipple. Um, Whipple Point LLC. And we have reviewed what the proposed use is. We felt like it would fit within the professional services. Not, uh, non-retail professional services of the professional office zone. Uh, if you look at the, at the map across the street, it's already professional office. Um, and so they could match that. If you read through the purpose, uh, language of the zone, it talks about being a quiet zone. So I'm sure the neighbors will enjoy that. It talks about being a good buffer between busy roads and neighborhood areas. So you do have intersection of two busy roads there. Um, we have sent out public noticing letters. Uh, this is a rezone, so city council has the final say. What we're looking for is a recommendation and of course to hold public hearing.
Okay, thank you. This is scheduled for public hearing tonight. We'll go ahead and, uh, open public hearing to discuss this particular item. If you have a comment on this item, if you want to come up and state your comment. Again, please state your name and address and.
Randy Yaley, twenty eighty-eight, south twelve thirty west in Syracuse. Um, I've had the privilege to speak with those who had so much heartburn the last time when this issue came up. Um, they don't have trouble with this except for the fact that are we looking at possibly changing the zoning the rest of the way up the street? As far as the Bennett residents, there's been some discussion there that they may be interested in changing their zoning as well. I don't have a particular interest one way or the other at this point, but wanted to see what the council's feeling was or the planning commission's feeling was as far as in the future, is this something that's going to expand and will this cause further consternation for the neighbors? As it moves on up the road, uh, I've seen in other cities where they've done things like this and you tend to have a mini plague going on for business up a road where it's otherwise zoned residential. So that's my only point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We'll come on that in a minute.
Hi, I'm Connie Wicker. I live at twenty seven ninety south, one thousand west. And I'm just here to see what's happening with that property and and making sure we don't go to the industrial stage. And if they're planning on buying, you know, more land and changing things, or if it's going to stay a calm place like the, the, the one west of them. So I'm just here to find out what the plans are and what I can take back to neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Spencer Whipple, uh, one fifty-four south, three hundred west in Kaysville. Um, I'm the owner of Whipple Point, um, just I guess to speak to the use that we're looking for, maybe clarify some stuff.
Or if, if you want, we can do two ways. You can make a comment right now or I can call you up afterwards and you have more time.
Oh, okay. I just didn't know. I've, I've never done a rezoning hearing or anything like that before.
Go ahead and talk now, that's fine.
Either way, should I wait and come back up or are there more people that have concerns?
Go ahead right now.
Okay, um, just to address some of the concerns, um, we are planning on purchasing. We have a lease with them with an intent to purchase within a couple of years after we get more established. Um, and it is for adults with mental disabilities and access to the community. And so basically what it would be is a base camp for them to come and do different classes and interactions with each other, play games. And the, the space that we're using, we're planning on, on leaving that back lot area and putting it grass and maybe a, a basketball court or a pickleball court or something for them. Just because they run into a lot of situations where it's difficult for them to be in the community, maybe some like, uh, more accessible toys for them to use and stuff like that. Um, we don't have any um, intentions of expanding past that. Um, really our goal is community integration. And so this is just kind of a place where we can help them learn how to do that. And as far as like parking lot and stuff like that goes, we really don't need a whole lot. It's mostly they'll be transported over there and then they'll head out into the community or they'll do different activities there at the, at the facility and, and then we'll also have some office space for administrative tasks and stuff like that. So.
Hey, thank you. Do you want to comment too, or should I close the public hearing?
Do that and then I'll ask a question with your permission.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and, and close public hearing. And now we'll go over.
I have been somewhat involved in noise complaints from the neighbors with earthworks there over the last several months. Uh, one of the biggest complaints is noise early in the evening. I'm sorry, early in the morning and late in the evening. I wonder if the owner could tell us what his intended hours will be.
Sure, could you come back up to the podium, Mr. Whipple?
Uh, so for day supports, the typical hours are between, uh, nine and three. So they'll have staff at the homes that will help them get ready for the day and then they'll transport to the facility and then they'll do activities from there or, or in there. And then around three o'clock, they'll usually head off. Um, we do, we do plan on also using it as a place for them to come and, and relax and unwind after it may be a busier day if they want to come and, and hang out in the grassy area in the back or like watch a movie inside or different things like that, but it wouldn't be, um, it wouldn't be super early in the morning and it wouldn't be super late at night. A lot of the clients and individuals that we work with um, are getting to bed around eight or nine o'clock at night. So that's going to be typical hours.
Did you want to please stay overnight?
They don't, they don't stay there. They don't, it's not any sort of residential. It is, it's strictly, um, day supports and, um, kind of leisure activity access. There would be, there would be on the weekends, if they're there, it would be because someone has a birthday or they're, um, looking for something to do and, and they, a lot of them are on very fixed income. And, uh, one of the things that we found is, is really nice for them is to have a place where they can go and kind of have those community activities without having to spend the money. So we'll set up like a theater room so that they can watch a movie or we'll set up a game room with ping pong table or, um, a little basketball shot, uh, and different things like that. So they can go and do that. And so that would be the only use on the weekend. It wouldn't be, it would never be super heavy, I don't think.
Would, would you have staff there? When A has been used, you'll have a staff person there, I assume?
Yes, yeah, there would always be, there would always be a staff there. They would never have, um, there would never be a time where they were there without, without staffing and the state has pretty strict rules on staffing ratios and, and different things depending on, you know, the level of need the clients have.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Whipple down up here in the commission? Okay, thank you. And to address Mr. Gately's concern, um, right now, the master plan is, is it is there on the, um, the existing zone, the master plan is right there. Um, if, if they wanted to go beyond that, uh, where it's at right now, we'd have to do some other changes to the master plan and things like that. The general plan have to change to allow, uh, because the, the P O falls under the commercial. And sure, I can talk and get close to the mic. If you look at the general plan map as it showed on the screen there, the, the red, the two red areas are the area, the one is already professional office, the one on the, uh, the west side of the str- of one thousand west. And the area we're talking tonight is the one on the east side. And if, if it were to go more to go down the street, you'd have to go through and change the general plan. Because right now the general plan does not allow for additional, um, commercial or professional office or anything like that, going any, anything but residential in that area. So there would have to be some other changes. And the public could be noticed about it. And so there would be other changes that would have to be made in order to allow something else to come in.
Mister Chair, if you want, I can just kind of, for the, those in attendance, they may not know what the colors.
Sure, that'd be great if you would.
I mean, there is a table, but, but yeah, so here's the, here's the property. This is the general plan. So anytime you look at a rezone with a property, you want to refer to the general plan. And so it's already general planned for commercial, which would accept the professional office designation. There's multiple zones that can fit in each category. So it's a little bit confusing sometimes, but so if the question, if the question's asked, does this use fit the, the general plan? And the answer is yes. But to answer the question of, um, you know, what is this orange color? Well, that's the medium density residential. The blue is the civic. So you've got a church and a school. The green is the park. And then the yellow is low density residential. So, so yeah, being, being on a arterial road, you know, I know that property has been for sale. If they, they would have to approach the city and request to change the general plan as well as a zoning to, before that could be commercial and they do a site plan because they'd have to figure out parking and all that. So it'd be quite a process to convert that house to a commercial, but they could do it, but they would, it would take public, multiple public hearings and some time.
I'll go ahead and recognize Mr. Gaily for a question.
Thank you. Um, so this is showing that it's in the plan for as commercial zoning right now, but the notice stated we were changing from A one.
Okay, the, the zoning.
Are they different? Are they different things?
The zoning and the general plan can be different. And i- initially, like for example, when the general plan is put in place, it like the, in this case of this, it's been A one for a long, long time.
Yes.
And, um, and you and I, I've gone up here in Syracuse. I know you've lived here a long time in Syracuse, too, longer than I have probably. And that's been A one for a long, long time.
Hmm.
And so because of the issues with earthworks, they were grandfathered in because there was allowed under the original A one.
Okay.
And so, but now that they've moved out, now the zoning under that is A one. So they have, but, and, but the general plan says, okay, but it can't, but the general plan says you can change it to commercial or professional office or something that falls into that commercial um, bucket. Uh, but that's all you could do. You could either have A one or you could have it be commercial, or you have to go through the whole process of changing the general plan, public hearings, site plans, you know, zoning changes. It's a lot more work than, than what it is for just this one. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. So if, if this went to professional office, would there then be a discussion about changing those other areas up the road from earthworks to professional office or would it stay as commercial?
Well, it's the two zones, the two small pieces of property next to it that are A one right now in the future could go to commercial, could go to professional office or commercial. Noah, can you pull back up the, the general plan? Yeah, the, the two long strips, those are the storage units.
Right.
And that's the house.
Right.
So the general plan is different than the zoning.
Like, but I also don't want you to.
General plan.
It was like absolutely.
Commercial.
Walking busy.
Zoning is still A one. So this application does not cover the storage units, does not cover the house.
I was aware of that. I'm just, I've expressed earlier, I'm just wondering what the thought process would be because there's a tendency to move.
So. No, 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 we would only do that if the city initiated some sort of general plan update, which we have talked about doing in upcoming year. Uh, but that would also be part of a public process or if somebody applied to change it, you know, but I don't, I don't foresee any creeping of the land uses.
Okay. Now, one last question. In the event my mother passed away this week or last week, just so you know, so we now have issues with inheritance and estate and whatnot going on. If those were to be sold by us as children because it belongs to an LLC right now, would that then be subject to the commercial general plan?
Selling the property doesn't change the.
Or whoever purchased it.
Uh, well, I could, I'd be happy to maybe answer that more in depth outside of the, the meeting, especially since.
I just didn't know if you could tell me now or not.
Yeah. Why don't you talk to, talk to him after, just stick around for a few minutes after the meeting and, and talk to Noah and he can.
I live a long ways away. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, so we've had our public hearing. We've had a discussion. So now it's back to the commission. We can decide we want to make what motion we want to take or if we need any more discussion on it. Okay. Motion then?
Uh, I move that we, uh, approve the application, um, from Whipple Point LLC to rezone this, uh, property on twenty seven fifty-one, south one thousand west from eight one to, uh, P O.
That would be a recommendation to council.
Recommendation to the city.
Okay, we have a motion or a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Next item is a, a public hearing and a request for a zoning amendment. Um, Noah, you want to walk us through this one?
Uh, yes. So this is located kind of by the movie theaters. Uh, the, I actually don't see the applicant here. Uh, he applied to change the zoning from R one to R three. The general plan is low density residential. So we're asking the question, does it, would it match the general plan? Yes. Doesn't mean you have to change it. Uh, changing it would make kind of a island of R three.
Yeah.
There's no R three around there. And his intention is to subdivide it and changing the zoning still doesn't give him enough frontage to be able to subdivide it. Um, so, um, it's up to you what you guys want to recommend to city council.
Okay, thank you. And with this is scheduled for public hearing tonight, we'll go ahead and, and open public hearing. And we'll close public hearing. Okay, to the commission. Um, this one I've got a lot of issues with. It, I don't, I don't see it, just putting an island like that is, is not smart planning. Um, and the fact that he doesn't meet the required requirements even for an R three, I don't, I don't see how we could ever, how we could recommend um, approving this.
I agree with that, Mister Chair.
I agree with you, Commissioner, you know, and as we heard with the explanation, it doesn't meet the requirements for our three, and I know we have to be extremely careful not to create islands of you know, special situations and that this would just stand out like swiss.
Yeah.
Yeah. Agreed. Um, and I don't know if it got recorded because of my, because of my microphone. If it got recorded, but I did.
I think this is a comment on, you know, islands are okay when they fit the, you know, needs, you know, because we were just basically talking about an island where we had a general commercial, uh, but this was kind of a different, this would be a different island because it'd be right in the middle of the road uh, along the length of it. And so it's not necessarily that, you know, we're, we're going from one to another, back to, and it would just.
Oh, and I think too, it doesn't meet the requirements for what he needs to have for that.
For the frontage.
Yeah. This, this lot is, I mean, it's an acre deep. Those, those lots were, um, are set up to be large lots. Um, horse property, things like that is kind of the intention when those lots were created. So.
And I believe the general plan is just still R one, right?
It's still R one.
Scroll down. It's still just low density.
Yeah, take a motion. And this is a recommendation to council.
Mister Chair, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion.
It's like, I can't make the motion.
I know. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that of denial um, for this request by Roberto Coro, Coro's for a rezone at approximately fifteen sixty-eight south twenty five hundred west from R one to R three, and this is a recommendation of denial to the city council.
Okay, we have a motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is to adjourn to work session. So someone's make that motion for us.
I'm moved.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we are now in work session. And so first item is city council of Councilman Watson, if you have something for us.
I do have a couple of things. So in our last, um, business meeting, uh, we voted on a few things that I wanted to make you guys aware of. So, um, there was a request to, uh, uh, change the general plan for a property located at two thousand west, twenty seven hundred south, which would have adjusted the boundaries of medium desert, medium des- density residential and commercial land use designations. So this was that commercial with a PRD, um, next to it. So we, um, we denied that request to alter the general plan for that commercial because we knew it was tied to a large PRD development that I don't think most of the council members were too thrilled about. Um, the other thing that we voted on was the, um, rezone for the, uh, fifty-five plus development on twenty four, twenty-five west, twenty seven hundred south. Um, that PRD development. Um, that PRD development rezon did pass. Let's see, we also approved the changes to the Syracuse City Code pertaining to the shade trees, which you guys talked quite a bit about, and I think we passed with most of your recommendations without much change. Um, and then the other thing that we voted on was the, uh, city planning commission bylaws. So we did vote to, uh, to slightly amend those that if there is failure to take action, it results in a table. Yeah, so I don't know if we did it exactly what you guys had talked about, but I think it accomplishes the same thing, yeah.
Didn't want to have a way where we were.
Yeah, so.
It stuck because we couldn't.
Right. So I, I think that's all I had updates on, unless you guys had any questions for me.
Questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, city attorney update, anything for us?
I'd really like to discuss item number four on your agenda, but in the absence of that item, I'll pass, thank you.
I thought you maybe knew something we didn't. You, you could read between the lines up there, there actually was a fourth. Okay, um, upcoming agenda items.
All right, so we, um, we don't have anything immediately coming up on the docket, uh, scheduled. But we do have, uh, an application for a rezon. Um, and, uh, preliminary Platts PRD zoning, uh, down east of the, uh, what do you call them? The, the Public Works Buildings, they're on twenty-four hundred West. Uh, that would be potentially for, uh, the Charter School, uh, some residential and, and commercial slash industrial space. Uh, so we'll see, um.
Do you know anything about the Charter School? Usually they have to have some kind of a theme or something. We know what it's going to be, or have they talked to you about it?
My understanding is it's an expansion, another Syracuse Arts Academy satellite campus, but, um, yeah, that would, that's going to be up to the applicant. Um, we also, uh, have the Banbury Town Homes Project, we've been working on that. That'll be coming up here at some point, probably end of August, hopefully. Um, and then, uh, Pacific Steel coming up again as well, the one that we, uh, tabled tonight, so. Um, yeah, other than that, that's, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the commission? Okay, next time, commission reports, so anything to report for the commission? I will be missing our August sixth meeting. Um, I have a wedding I have to be at. Was my son, he'd be pretty mad at me if I miss his wedding.
Let me make a note.
So hopefully Lon will be here and can, can take the meeting. If not, I guess it falls to, to James if he's, if he's here, is the next senior member. So. So that's my report, I guess. I, I won't, I will not be here, I'll be here the next meeting, but I will not be here on August sixth.
And Commissioner King, we're having issues with the audio, but he's indicated he'll be there.
Okay. So for some reason, if, if Vice Chair Hunter is not there, then, then Commissioner King will, will chair that meeting. Uh, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.